Good evening, everybody. I will call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for tonight, Monday, September 9th, 2024. I would call upon Mayor Pro Tim Mormon to lead us in a moment of silent reflection.
Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Faray?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the amendments for August 19th, 2024. Are there any edits or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, they stand approved. And now we have recognitions and communications. We have a proclamation for National Grandparents' Day, and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it Kiki McGough and Teri Kearney here? All right, you want to come on up here as well as Annabestamente? Did I get that close? Ah, I tried, I tried. With the Colorado Save the Children Action Network. They'll be here to accept the proclamation. So whereas grandparents play an important role in our community, including extraordinary support for young children, and grandparents play a valuable role as children care providers and primary caretakers of young children, and whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, grandparents regularly care for one in four children under the age of five, and provide $253 billion per year in free childcare, which in Colorado would translate to nearly 79,000 children younger than the age of five being cared for by grandparents. And whereas more than 51% of Coloradans live in childcare deserts with insufficient licensed childcare options, so grandparents play a critical caretaking role, offering necessary and consistent childcare, and whereas grandparents create a unique intergenerational connection with their grandchildren, pass along the stories and culture traditions of the past, and instill grandchildren with strength and confidence, as well as offer new parents invaluable information, tips, and tricks on how to raise and care for children. And whereas when tragedy strikes and parents can no longer care for their children, grandparents are often the best suited to step in and raise their grandchildren. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that September 8th, 2024 be designated as Grandparents' Day to celebrate the invaluable role that grandparents play in the lives of young children across the city of Arvada. This is dated the 9th day of September, 2024, signed by the mayor and all of city council. So I'll come and bring it down to you.
Thank you very much. We'll do a quick photo, and then if anybody'd like to go to the podium, say a few words, In fact, I'm going to go a little out of order here. I have a bit of a cute idea. If anyone in the room is a grandparent, would you be willing to get in the photo at your own comfort? Including with our team, at your comfort? Yeah.
I'll speak briefly. So I'm Kiki McGough, and it's 50 years I've been a special educator. I'm the parent of three children and the grandparents of two girls who are currently living in Germany. And I work with the Lake Arbor Purpose Driven Optimists Club, but I'm also the community person for Scan Save the Children Action Network. And during COVID, we did a lot of research on the role of grandparents, and it's really amazing the amount that grandparents do for children. The most recent research says that when grandparents are involved, children have more positive mental health and social emotional learning later in life. So grandparents bring a great deal to the table. When COVID hit, my granddaughter was born on January 30th, and I was going to watch her two days a week. And my daughter said, will you still watch her? So my daughter went from maternity leave to online instruction to summer vacation to going back to school at National Jewish Hospital, where they have a school for kids with health problems. And I said, well, I was going to do two days a week, but most of the childcare was closed down, and it wasn't really safe to have Ellie in a program with grandma in her almost 70s without vaccines. So my daughter said, it's not a problem, you can just watch her full time. So while I juggled five different volunteer organizations, I had my granddaughter 45 hours a week, and I wouldn't have traded it for a minute. So thank you very much for recognizing the role of grandparents.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no presentations this evening, but we will open it up to public comment for issues not on this evening's agenda, so issues not on a hearing. And I see we have Judith Denham. Welcome, Judy. Please state if you are a resident of the city, and if so, if you know your district.
I am a resident of the city. I'm with the Arvada Historical Society, and I want to introduce to you John Yocum. We're going to be talking about the 21st Annual Cemetery Tour. Mr. Yocum, take it away.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm John Yocum. If you want to spell the name, it's just like it sounds, J-U-C-H-E-M. And I came here in 19, excuse me, 1859, but not to mine, came here to make vegetables and grow a big garden for miners up in Blackhawk and Central City. I had a measly little 80 acres down by Hector's Garden, and expanded that to end up to be 400 acres down there that went from Ridge Road to 44th Avenue, Kepling to Yocum Road, which you guys now call Garrison. You should know John Yocum pretty well because the city of Arvada owns about 65% of the ditch, and you guys divert it, get it into Arvada reservoir, treat it, and I checked the drinking fountain out here, and it's good Yocum ditch water. So the Historical Society is going to have a cemetery tour this year, they're going to have me, and they're going to have my buddy George Swadley, and they're going to have Reverend Rhodes and Albert Barth, who put really the first water system in Arvada. And we're going to talk about how the ditches got the city to grow and flourish and become the Arvada that you guys know and enjoy today. So here's my friend Judith.
Thank you, John. So we want to invite you to this tour that's going to feature a farmer, a royal gardener, a beekeeper, and a banker, and they all have one thing in common, and that's building ditches and the water supply for Arvada. They'll all be in costume with appropriate props. The tour is on the 21st, starts at 11:00, and tours start every 30 minutes after that, with the last tour at 1:00. Tickets are $15 to $18, and you can get them at historyarvada.org. Now, Mr. Yocum has this measuring device within, so my question to you guys is which one of these is over 100 years old? You're going to have to come to the tour to find out.
Thank you very much. Ms. Haley, I feel like we should send the Water Department on that just for fun. They'd probably have a great time. All right, next we have Karen Gerbach.
Good evening again. Karen Gerbach at 6872 Juniper Court, and I represent Friends of Ralston Creek Neighborhoods. The Arvada Planning Department has scheduled a Planning Commission public hearing on 9/17 for the 6800 Kilmer RB Storage Project to consider a major comprehensive plan amendment from mixed-use residential to industrial office in order to correctly align with the current zoning of industrial light. We believe the comp plan should not be amended because the current classification is consistent with the GEO's neighborhood classification to the immediate north, and is also compatible with the surrounding residential and recreational uses in the adjacent Forest Springs neighborhood. Given the unique location of the site immediately adjacent and with direct access to the Ralston Creek Trail, this is an ideal location for mixed-use development similar to GEO's that can support residential growth and small-scale commercial uses along this critical pedestrian and cycling corridor. This classification is also a reasonable approach to stepping down the more intensive uses to the east, including an existing industrial light warehouse and several quasi-municipal service buildings. Rather than changing the comp plan to match the zoning for the site, the city should look to rezone the property to match the mixed-use residential emphasis classification under the current comp plan. The industrial light zoning of this parcel in the LDC is inappropriate due to the adjacent surrounding uses and the additional incompatible strain that industrial development of the site would obviously place on the Ralston Creek. An industrial light zoning only allows outdoor storage to support the primary industrial light business, not be the primary business. Also, there's no reason to amend the comp plan for a single parcel just to facilitate one owner's land use proposal, which is not complete. Given the unique challenges of the site, we dispute that it could ever be safely developed without full remediation, and to date, this landowner has not been willing to spend the money that is needed to do that. And if they're not willing to ensure that any development will be safe for surrounding residents, then the city should not allow the developer to move forward with this proposal. This is yet another reason why the Planning Commission can and should deny this request. Recently, the Jeffco Planning Commission reviewed a rezoning for expansion requests by another storage facility off Indiana. It was turned down, and the chairman said, I can't see the compatibility. The compatible ZIP code to Candela's neighborhood maybe, but RB Storage doesn't meet the expectations of the county and the city of Arvada. The land use decisions run with the land, not the owner. We will ask the Arvada Planning Commission to look at what serves the public interest of the entire southwest Arvada neighborhood as well, and deny this request.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in chambers this evening who would like to testify at this time? Please come down. And sir, since you did not complete a form, I'm going to need a full name and address.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Since you did not have a registration form, we'll just need a full name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Jim Morgan, 7551 Oak Street. This relates to concealed carry in City Hall, which was discussed in a recent meeting. During the debate concerning allowing concealed carry weapons in City Hall, Randy Mormon briefly told of the murders of Masconan Milk in San Francisco City Hall in 1978. No doubt the intent was to persuade his council colleagues to vote against the resolution, which would have allowed concealed carry in Arvada City Hall. If it had happened in San Francisco that someone would bring in a gun and murder people, it could happen in Arvada. So just don't allow concealed carry in City Hall. That appears to have been the argument. However, Randy seems to have overlooked some pertinent information relative to the San Francisco City Hall murders. Randy did not mention that San Francisco City Hall already had at least one metal detector, and it had security similar to Arvada. Knowing about the security measures, the murderer evaded them and entered another part of the building. He then proceeded to murder Masconan Milk. Had there been someone with concealed carry in the vicinity of the murders, one, perhaps both, might have not occurred. Security did not help the victims. A good guy with a gun might have. Randy's selective storytelling left his listeners with the impression it would have been better if no guns had been allowed in the building. What he did not say was that guns already were not allowed in the building. When you are providing information to inform your colleagues about a topic, it's best to provide all of the relevant information rather than attempt to misinform them for your own purposes. Lauren Simpson voted to defeat the resolution because of her concern about, quote, "psychological safety," unquote, of people in the building. Lauren sacrificed the real safety of city employees in order to placate some psychological manifestation. Let's understand, a good guy with a gun might have prevented or stopped Columbine. A good guy with a gun might have prevented or stopped the King Super shooting in Boulder. A good guy with a gun might have prevented or stopped the 2015 San Bernardino slaughter of 14 killed and 22 wounded. Randy and Lauren, along with Lisa and Shauna, helped defeat the concealed carry initiative for Arvada City Hall. In so doing, you place the employees who work at City Hall at greater risk. Good guys will follow the law. Bad guys will find a way around it, just like the murderer in San Francisco City Hall. Unfortunately, now there'll be no good guys with guns in Arvada City Hall, and by the time the police arrive, it might be too late. Forbid that anything would ever happen here at City Hall, but if it does, the fault rests with City Council.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. All right, next we have our, is there anyone else in chambers? Yes, please come down. As noted, full name and address for the record.
Stephen Selly, 11449 West 85th Place. Okay. I want to just talk about 86th Parkway. It's like an international speedway up there. And I know, you know, I see the police there once in a while trying to regulate speed on that area, but, and I know during the summertime, when windows are open, it's a little bit more, but the motorcycles, the cars, it's just, it's just unbelievable up there. And I also represent bike-friendly Arvada as a member, and also Bike Jeffco. And a few weeks ago, we had an individual who was struck and killed at the 86th Parkway and Kepling intersection. He was in the bike lane. And I've been working with Keely Van Brugen, your bicycle pedestrian coordinator, and she has indicated that the report on that was that the pickup truck, I believe, came over into the bike lane and literally hit the individual there, struck him, as far as I know. She said that she has brought that up to the team and that they are looking at some short-term and long-term solutions there. But as an avid bicyclist and a member of those two groups, and a resident that backs up to 86th Parkway, I would just like to make City Council aware of the fact that, to me, there is a real speed and traffic issue on that particular stretch. And anything that could be done would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you'll pass your contact information to the team, if you'd like follow up, they can work with you. Thank you. Would anyone else in chambers like to come forward for a public testimony at this time? Ms. Rush is walking up, but Ms. Haley, do we have anyone, no one on Zoom? Thank you, Ms. Rush. All right, so with that, I will close the public hearing portion of this evening's agenda, and I will open new business. We have a few items on the consent agenda today, and they start with R24-088, a resolution approving dissolution of the Walter Michael Northey Memorial Fund, Inc., and transfer of assets to the Arvada Police Foundation. R24-089, a resolution authorizing a fourth amendment to an agreement between the city of Arvada and Guide House, Inc., for professional services relating to implementing a replacement enterprise resource planning ERP system in amount not to exceed $2,565,239 in the first year. And R24-090, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Arvada and Wink Associates, Inc., for professional services related to Gold Stripe Park construction, documentation, and administration in an amount not to exceed $738,971. Councilmember Faray?
I move R24-088 through R24-090, be approved.
Thank you. Council will cast their votes. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next on this evening's agenda, we have two resolutions. The first is R24-091, a resolution supporting the Jeffco Housing Blueprint created by the Jeffco Housing Advocacy Committee, or Steering Committee. And our presenter on this item is Chamber of Commerce President Kami Welch. Arvada Chamber, I should say. Welcome, Ms. Welch.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you so much for having me today to share a little bit about the Jeffco Housing Blueprint. The Arvada Chamber of Commerce is extremely excited to be part of this initiative, and we're thrilled to be sharing with all of you tonight an opportunity to sign on and write a resolution to support this. I'm hoping tonight to start with a little bit of background and context about why we're talking about housing. I know you all are very well informed on housing as an issue, so I'll keep this brief, but important to remind everybody, Jeffco does not have enough housing inventory to meet the needs of our community. In a recent study, it was recognized that there was a shortage of nearly 20,000 homes and housing units across all income levels and types. We know that options are limited for middle-income households, especially those households with incomes between 60 and 120% AMI. So just to give a sense, that's a salary anywhere from $55,000 to $156,000, depending on how many people are in your family. Housing policies can help, or they can inhibit, housing development. Housing affordability is a regional challenge that requires a regional solution. As we know, housing doesn't know boundaries, and it's important to build collaboration. And there are a lot of misconceptions about affordable housing. The Colorado Gives Foundation is behind this initiative. Back in 2021, they recognized that there was an opportunity to do more, to align our region and community together. So the first step was to align the Jeffco Housing Steering Committee, which I'll tell you a little bit about here in a second, and then to launch a housing blueprint and really consider opportunities for increased awareness. So the Housing Steering Committee was created as a multidisciplinary group of leaders throughout Jefferson County, includes elected officials and leaders from the county's five largest municipalities. Thank you to interim city manager Linda Haley and Mayor Simpson for serving on that committee. It also includes developers and builders, nonprofits and housing providers, as well as economic development groups and chambers. Phase one was January through June of 2023, and that was really focused on examining the policies, incentives, regulatory, and land use tools available to local governments. And then we moved into phase two, which was a collaborative strategy to support local efforts, build positive community engagement, and facilitate partnerships through the blueprint, which I believe you all got a copy of. This is an important issue for us as the Arvada Chamber of Commerce. We believe that housing is an economic imperative. We hear every day from employers that they cannot recruit and retain the talent that they need because housing is such a challenge. And so we signed on to this effort early because we recognize the need for increasing that 60 to 120 AMI within our community. As you all know, because you are all part of different collaboratives and groups, setting those foundational agreements is really important as you jump into a collaborative effort like this. So this group was really strategic and worked really hard to kind of set the groundwork for those foundational agreements. Core values and guiding principles such as local control and regional collaboration, ensuring that there's respect, collaboration, and innovation, don't want to be stale in our approach. Inclusion and forward momentum, thinking about education, leadership, and how we bring people along on that journey. And then as we thought about our legislative policy agenda, which we know that housing policy happens at all levels, we thought about themes including collaboration and partnership, maintaining and increasing resources, and community development, making sure that we are preserving local authorities. You see that theme carrying through a lot of these comments. What we're here today to talk about is the blueprint. There are three pillars in the blueprint. The first is to foster input and participation in strategies that support affordable housing. There's a number of sub-goals within that pillar, such as educating the public and changing the narrative focused on who is impacted and the benefits to the community, engaging employers, including them in affordable housing conversations, and building additional support for affordable development, that's my personal favorite, identifying and training and mobilizing citizens to engage in this conversation. The second pillar is to support policy development in Jeffco jurisdictions by sharing best practices, tracking progress, and activating resources. This is done by supporting best practices and policy and process, emphasizing education, understanding stakeholder interests, and practical applications, and identifying pivotal moments in policy and development process for support, and activating citizens and other stakeholders in their engagement. And then the final pillar is to identify specific programs and projects for collaboration across jurisdictions and agencies to increase housing that is affordable in the county. And this is really that call for collaboration across our region. So working together to build affordability, this is a long-term plan, so the blueprint is designed to help make sure that we're targeting that middle income in the housing development. So it's complementary to other efforts. So I want to say that this is not replacing efforts that exist. We understand that many communities have done their own studies, have their own efforts underway. This is in no way intended to replace those efforts. It's really intended to be supplemental and to serve as kind of that regional opportunity to come together and support. What we're asking for today is an endorsement of the blueprint. I shared that this is an important piece of work for the Arvada Chamber of Commerce. You all are familiar with BOLD 2026, Big Opportunities for Leaders to Deliver. We recognize that these big issues that impact our community, whether it's housing or childcare or talent, they are cross-border, they're across boundaries, and we have to work together to solve them. And we think this is an example of how that can be done really well, learning from each other. And I can say that our chamber board of directors has endorsed this blueprint, and we are thrilled to be a named partner in this work and continue that great alignment. As our blueprint content became clear in the Steering Committee, and it's not a technical document, we know that we have to do work to be out and about and talk about it. That's why these endorsements are so important, is making sure that we first and foremost understand who is engaged in this work, and that we all have agreed that we're going to do it together. And then there is opportunity to continue through the organizations represented on the Steering Committee to be able to go out and officially release the blueprint publicly, which we do intend to do on October 18th. We appreciate your consideration for that endorsement. I talked a little bit about what got us here, what's included in the blueprint, now what does implementation look like. The Steering Committee that I mentioned, that's representative of those cross-functional organizations and entities, will stay together. They'll remain in an oversight role moving forward on a quarterly basis meeting. The blueprint will continue to be a living document that we will update as we learn and we grow and we develop and test strategies. And then, of course, we'll begin using the blueprint now to start conversations in our community. We see this as an opportunity to raise awareness and bring people along on the opportunities for the right housing within our community and beyond. So with that, I will thank you for your time today, appreciate your consideration around an endorsement. There's a lot of information and background up on this slide about where the data came from and what has led us to the development of this blueprint. But I can assure you that this has been countless hours of many leaders across this region working together for the greater good of solving one of the biggest challenges that our community is facing. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Welch. I will open it for council questions. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and thanks for presenting this to us. I was struck by one thing as I read it, and that was that it doesn't seem to contemplate the temporary nature that it might occupy, or contemplate a time where this housing blueprint is no longer needed. And so my, to expand on that, there was a time in the past where this wasn't needed. It's reasonable to assume at some point in the future, it also may not be needed. And in fact, the housing market's changed dramatically in three months and moves far quicker than these efforts, which take multi-years to focus down to a certain thing. So can you speak to, what is the housing blueprint or the working groups? You know, what is their discussions around, when do these things expire? How do we know when they expire? What comes next after this is no longer relevant? Whether that be- What comes next after this is no longer relevant, whether that be very soon, or whether it not be quite so soon, but contemplating that that's likely to happen?
Yeah, I love this question, and I think it's a very appropriate question that I'd love to take back to the group for a really detailed answer and response to. But what I can tell you is that the commitment of the blueprint is that it is a nimble document. And I would love nothing more to say than that housing is better, and that it's not a problem anymore. And I think that that's the commitment of the leaders around that table, is we are all there because we want to see that people within our communities can find somewhere within a reasonable proximity of their homes and their families and their works that life can happen. And so I believe that the commitment of the group is that this isn't a forever. This is an active group working to solve a current problem, but we'll have to continue to be nimble to make sure we work toward the right solution. But I would love to take your question back and make sure that is addressed directly. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Are there additional questions from the council? If not, I will accept Ms. Faray.
I'll make the motion.
Absolutely. And before you do, though, I'll just confirm with Ms. Morris, since I do sit on this advisory council, but it will not impact my vote. Do you want me to recuse, or are you good with me?
There's no need for you to recuse on this one. So to the extent you're sitting on a nonprofit board, that doesn't create a formal conflict of interest for you to be able to vote. So you're welcome to vote on this one.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morris. Please proceed, Ms. Faray.
All right. I move that R 24-091, a resolution supporting the Jeffco Housing Blueprint created by the Jeffco Housing Advocacy Steering Committee, be approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, you'd like to speak to your vote?
Yes, I'm voting yes on this. And I have spoken to a lot of employers that say that they have a hard time getting employees to stay, to retain, and the city is one of them. I've spoken to our partners at the golf courses, and they say that there are no public transportation to get folks out to Westwoods Golf Course. And so they're having a hard time maintaining their staffing for cooks, servers, and custodians. And so we need to find housing that regular folks who are in those income levels, that they can live and work in Arvada, just like the rest of us. I mean, I think gone are the days as we are growing and growing businesses, that we are a bedroom community. We are actually a community where we want people to live, work, and thrive. So I'm very excited to vote yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And all those have been cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Welch. Next, we have a resolution, R 24-092, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Fire Protection District for the financing of a joint community wildfire protection plan, CWPP. Deputy City Manager, Mr. Wick, you have this one.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution recommends the approval of this intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Fire Protection District for the purpose of creating a community wildfire protection plan, or CWPP. Under this IGA, we will cost-share the total cost of the CWPP at $66,473, with Arvada Fire providing funding for 60% of the total cost, which is not to exceed $39,883.80. The City of Arvada will provide funding for the remaining 40% of the total cost in an amount not to exceed $26,589.20. The city team and Arvada Fire Protection District recommend that the city council approve this IGA.
Thank you very much. Open it for council questions or action. Councilmember Marriott.
Mr. Wick, what's the source of funds for this project?
So I can't speak to Arvada Fire's source of funds, but ours is coming from the Office of the Emergency Manager.
Okay. And was that something we had in our budget, or we just have surplus funds in there to be able to do, or?
So we are using funds that are regularly budgeted for the Office of Emergency Management, and this is part of the expenditure from this year's budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Make a motion. There's no other questions?
I see no other lights.
I move that Resolution 24-092, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Arvada Fire Protection District for the CWPP be approved.
Thank you, council. There we go. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have first reading, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Oh, yep.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that CB 24-011, an ordinance vacating a portion of the cul-de-sac of West 59th Avenue dedicated as a right-of-way, as shown on the replat of a portion of Crestmont Subdivision adjacent to 5858 Ward Road, City of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, be approved on first reading, order published in full, and a public hearing set for October 7, 2024 at 6:15 p.m.
Thank you. Councilmember Ambrose, if I can have your vote?
Thank you. That passes seven to zero. Appreciate it. All right. I blinked myself onto the next agenda item for about half a second there. Apologies. All right. Next, we have the appointment to the Housing Advisory Committee of Alicia Duncan Coulter. And I will ask our council member representative to that committee, Ms. Faray, to make that motion.
Awesome. Thank you. I move to appoint Alicia Duncan Coulter to the Housing Advisory Committee to an unexpired term ending April 30, 2025.
Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Flying right through this tonight. All right. Next, we will open the public hearing for the reconsideration of a major modification for Texas Roadhouse from the Land Development Code subsection 5-1-3-1.B.2 that requires buildings adjacent to a pedestrian priority street to have a minimum height of 25 feet and have at least two usable floors for the building generally located at 5550 Wadsworth Boulevard. Do we have an applicant with us this evening? Please come forward.
Your Honor, you'll have the staff do the introduction first, and then we'll have the applicant presentation.
Perfect.
There should be a laminated sheet up there as well, that will have some helpful reminders of that.
No, I have all that. I don't have a name of a presenter.
Oh, okay. It'll be Mr. Smatana.
Mr. Smatana, please.
Great. Thank you. As you mentioned, there is a reconsideration for the request for the major modification that relates to building height. Although the building will only be a single-story for the Texas Roadhouse when the code requires two floors, the proposed building roofline will be 22 feet in height with the proposed tower element that reaches approximately 29 feet in height. The applicant believes that the overall building height meets the intent of the code, and that other commercial buildings in the vicinity are of a similar height and are a single-story. During their May 21st meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this major modification related to building height. However, the council did deny the request during the July 15th meeting. However, on August 5th, the council voted to reconsider this modification during this public hearing. Since the July 15th meeting, the applicant has made revisions to the building that may provide additional mitigation for the modification. These changes were provided as part of the council packet tonight, and can be discussed by the applicant during their presentation. Notice for this hearing was provided through publication in a local paper, mailed notice, signs posted on the property, and the item being listed on the agenda this evening. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. However, we have become aware that the date listed on our website for this hearing still indicated July 15th instead of today's date. Based on the various forms of notice that have been provided, council could determine that this is a minor notice defect per 81, I'm sorry, 8241 D2 of the Land Development Code. If you wish to move forward, the applicant is in attendance for a presentation and questions, and I am also available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smatana, do we have any additional information in regards to the potential minor defect? Ms. Grog?
Yes, Emily Grog for the City Attorney's Office. The section of our Land Development Code that Mr. Smatana just referenced, the 8-2-4-1-D2, does allow a city council to make a determination. Specifically, in any case in which a question arises at the public hearing regarding the adequacy of notice, consideration shall be given to the nature and extent of the deficiency, the probability of confusion resulting from the deficiency, and the type and variety of notice successfully accomplished in determining whether substantial compliance with the notice requirements of this code has been met. So it is a determination that city council can make at this time whether or not the QR code that led to the wrong, the former date, was a minor defect, and we can move forward with the hearing tonight, or if council feels that that does not fall under the category of minor defect, council can make the determination to do a continuance tonight. And we would just ask that we would pick a date certain so that that can handle some of the notice provisions going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
To make sure we're all on the same page. One, all printed information had the correct date, so all the mailers had corrected. Anyone who wanted to know about it got the correct date.
Correct.
Newspaper was correct.
Correct.
So this was a QR code that was on a sign that was physically located on the property.
That is correct.
But everything else was the correct date.
Yes. And it was also on the agenda for tonight, which is posted on the website.
So it's on our agenda as well. So I think this was just a minor thing. I mean, the likelihood of somebody scanning the QR code on a sign on a physical property. As far as all the people that are around the area, I support us just proceeding tonight.
Councilmember Faray?
Do we have an idea of how many people actually visited that?
We were unable to get that information specifically, so we weren't able to tell the amount of traffic that QR code could have generated. I will add that this is the third potential public hearing for this item, when we have had only two residents provide any kind of comment written or in person. And we did receive those two written comments tonight for those people, and I assume they're in the audience as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. If there are no other council questions, comments, then I will recommend to follow the staff's recommendation that this is a minor notice defect and continue with the application hearing this evening. All right. With that, I'd like to invite the applicant up. Respectfully, also, we need you to quickly swear in.
Yes. Marissa Coleman, 8600 West Bryn Mawr Road, Suite 800, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you. And that you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the reconsideration of our final major modification request. I think Mr. Smatana gave a good general update of where we've come since the July meeting, but I've revised the presentation since the last meeting and just run through kind of where we are for everyone's benefit. So again, Texas Roadhouse is looking to relocate their existing location from the southeast corner of the Harkins Theater to the southwest corner there of 55th and Old Wadsworth Boulevard. So as mentioned, the modification is due to being in the pedestrian priority zone and the requirement to have a minimum of 25 feet in height for the building and contain two usable floors. The building is being proposed as one-story. However, it is 28 feet, 10 inches in height to the tower, and also complies with the 15-foot minimum height to the roofline. Here again is just a zoomed-in spec detail of the varying heights of all the levels of the architectural elements of the building. So our justification for this request has been that we do meet the minimum total building height, as well as the minimum roofline height, and that generally the building's architecture appears as if it is, there are two stories or two usable floors. We've pointed out previously that there's several commercial retailers in this area that have one usable floor only with similar appearances that all fall within this priority zone. Additionally, I'm talking further with Roadhouse Operations. They did tell us that they use these two towers on the upper half of the building for storage. So while it's not accessible public space, it is used for their staff. It's approximately 776 square feet between the two towers. You access it from the interior of the building, and they store extra parts for the rooftop units and various equipment. This is an updated rendering that I previously provided from the view of 55th Avenue looking northwest towards the main elevation of the building, that they would consider their main elevation. Since the last meeting, we've added several additional, several faux windows, but all on the upper half of the building with complementing decorative lighting to give more of an appeal that the second story is usable, although it's not. Other elements just contributing to the offset of this request, being in the pedestrian priority zone, as mentioned, several faux windows have been added to the overall glazing, although it's not counted towards total transparency. It does give more of an effect of meeting the intent of that requirement, especially having them on the second half of the building. The location of the building in proximity to the public right-of-way, budding it up right against the corner, is required in meeting those minimum distances between the frontage, the frontage requirement that we have, as well as the distance from the public entrance to the right-of-way. The urban park that we're providing with a variety of seasonal landscaping to last year, some to last year-round, wraps around the building from the south and west elevations, and exceeds the minimum urban park requirement per code. We've proposed outdoor dining here that's usable three seasons out of the year, including heaters for chillier season. We've added architectural decorative brick feature to spruce up that blank dumpster wall that also complements the winter landscaping that we're proposing in this urban park area. We've added a roof over the dumpster enclosure to further screen that was a concern at our prior Plan Commission and City Council meeting. And again, the faux windows and the lighting to the upper half of the structure. And this is an updated rendering, viewer on Wadsworth going south, just further depicting those faux windows and the lighting on the upper half. And again, just in summary, we respectfully request approval of this major modification to permit one usable floor. We've taken, over the course of this project, almost two years now, working with staff, taking Plan Commission and City Council recommendations to further improve and upgrade from what the typical Texas Roadhouse prototype is, and as well as just complying with the site layout to best meet the intent of the code and comply with all other code requirements, with the exception of the two modifications. Texas Roadhouse is a good neighbor, and they want to stay in the community and continue to be a good member of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will bring up anyone in the public hearing who would like to speak on public comment on this item. We have one sign up, Mr. Ted Harburg. Full name in if you are a resident of the city.
Yes. My name is Ted Harburg. I am a resident. I own a townhouse just down the street from this proposed Texas Roadhouse. I'm also a senior urban planner in a neighboring jurisdiction. We should remember the wise words spoken at a recent national convention, that the reason we citizens come before our politicians is to say, here are our problems, solve them; here are our opportunities, seize them; and here are our dreams, help them come true. Today, I stand here with a plea to honor these dreams, to seize the opportunities that lie before us, and to protect the vision that we've set for Newtown, Arvada. Just this past spring, this city's leadership endorsed this plan, this vision for Newtown, Arvada, that includes multi-story buildings with restaurants on the ground floor of mixed-use buildings. We embraced a plan that prioritized thoughtful design, placing buildings facing our priority streets, not facing their own parking lots. Yet tonight, we are asked to compromise on that dream and to waive a crucial provision of the code that ensures quality development in Newtown. We are told that this rule wasn't meant for projects like this one, that it only applies to, quote, "large developments." But let me be clear, as a constituent, I never consented to such an arbitrary interpretation. Our Land Development Code Our land development code should apply fairly and consistently to all projects, big or small, provided they meet the approval criteria for a major modification. This project fails to mitigate the adverse impacts to the extent reasonably feasible and should not be approved. As a planner, I understand the transformative power of good design, even at a small scale. I reject the argument that enforcing our design standards will drive away business, and so should all of you. We've also heard claims that the applicant has done everything they possibly can, but as someone with a background in architecture, I find that statement deeply misleading. The applicant has repeatedly admitted that they've only made modest adjustments to the corporate building prototype. They never actually asked an architect to draft a custom design in an attempt to comply with our city's codes. And as I have previously made clear, the planning process also failed to properly engage with the neighborhood on many occasions, which is very embarrassing for the city. All of these things were reasonably feasible, and yet they were not done. To praise such a lackluster approach sends a dangerous message, that corporate interests outweigh the concerns of our own residents. Tonight, I urge you to choose a different path. I ask you to honor the dream we've set for Newtown and to vote no on this requested modification for Texas Roadhouse. Let's build a city that reflects our vision and our aspirations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to speak? Please. Name and address for the record.
Yes, Jordan Green, 5210 Garrison Street here in Arvada. I had no plan to speak tonight, but I do generally, again, I commented before, agree with my fellow community member on pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use development. However, I am from the Louisville, Kentucky area, Texas Roadhouse HQ, and fully support Texas Roadhouse, and they already exist in that same parking lot. So I think we can just allow this exception because they already exist. I will add the caveat that the remaining infill opportunity of that area should still remain with the Newtown mixed-use plan, but I, again, fully support both ideas. Just, yeah, again, going forward, stick with the mixed-use plan, but Texas Roadhouse already exists, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in chambers who'd like to speak on this issue? Ms. Rush, do we have anyone on Zoom? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and open it to council questions. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I'm curious to hear from the applicant or the city about why the second floor with 700 square feet of storage space does not count as a second usable floor.
The intent was to have an area that could be utilized for the public on that second floor, or have residential space or office space, but, you know, they do have some spaces available for employees, although it is not anything that's necessarily directly related to the restaurant, but it could be considered usable space.
Thank you. I was just wondering what was specifically in the code that would preclude that from being usable space.
I don't think there's anything. I think if you look at the code, it really is intended to talk about office space or residential space or second-floor commercial space, not necessarily storage space, but the council could find that to encompass storage space as well.
For the applicant, if you have storage space up in these towers on the second floor, does that reasonably free up more storage space on the ground floor for potential pedestrian customer use?
The interior layout, they still have, so the operator of the, of each location kind of picks their, how much storage they need for their operation, and so there's different footprints depending on what the local partner, you know, feels will best suits their operation. So off the top of my head, I don't know if they would, if I could say yes to that exactly without knowing, you know, if they're going to put things there. Did they reduce their, the footprint? I'd have to compare the storage on the inside to what other footprints have, but it's possible, but I don't want to say yes, that's the case.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. There, other council questions? I know all of you heard this before, it's really--
This is all for me, everybody.
I tried to keep it brief, so. I do appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I apologize, I missed the last hearing, I was in New York for work. So trying to think of any other questions I might have that weren't already answered in the presentation. About the height, I guess the, so the faux windows, those are a new addition, yes?
On the upper half, yes.
And those won't, you mentioned those won't have any transparency or anything?
No.
So folks won't be able to see them from the inside, but they're just an exterior?
Exactly. If they were transparent, you would see the rooftop units, because the upper half, those are just parapet walls, with the exception of the tower elements are structures, but the rest of the upper half is, are walls, so you would just see up to the units.
Well, I actually like the addition, I think it's an attractive addition to the design, so thank you. I think that's probably all the comments I have, so I guess with that, I will ask for a motion unless anyone has any questions they'd like clarification on. Councilmember Pfeiffer, thank you very much.
All right, I'll make a motion. I move that the, a major modification from the land development code's subsection five dash one dash three dash one dot B dot two that requires buildings adjacent to a pedestrian priority street to have a minimum height of 25 feet and have at least two usable floors for the building generally located at 555-0 Wadsworth Boulevard in the city of Arvada, Colorado be approved. This motion is being, is based on the finding of fact adopted by the planning commission.
Thank you very much. I see Councilmember Davis, your light was first.
Well, I'm going to vote yes on this exception, major modification, but I do want to assure to the residents that staff will take a look at future development in the area and make sure that it meets the code that was set out, or the land development code that was set out through the Newtown plan. I think that it would be, it just looks a little disingenuous that we're doing something that we said we weren't going to do, and now we're doing it. So I want to make sure that we are true to the, to our neighbors and to our residents, that we are, we're married to that Newtown, and we will have maybe small exceptions, but, and some minor modifications, but trying to steer away from some of these more major things.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon, you are next.
Thank you, mayor. I'm thinking I'm probably maybe the only one voting no tonight, but I do want to explain my vote the second time around. I, you know, we go through a lot of effort to develop these plans and engage the community, and I feel like we've, we've put forward this vision that we need to be doing all that we can to implement that vision. And specifically in the code, and this would be under criteria one of the major modification, the code says that there's a two-story requirement to create more urban environment along pedestrian streets, and we heard from our team tonight about how the reasoning or the intent behind that usable second story is for public office residential space to create that more pedestrian environment. And so I do not believe that faux windows count for that, and I feel like it does not set a good precedent going forward as we try to develop this area and what kind of exceptions to expect from others wanting to get the same type of treatment, so I will be voting no.
Thank you. Councilmember Ambrose, you were next.
Yeah, I will be granting the modification and voting yes. This was my vote the last time on this modification. I think it is usable space, a second story. It seems like the code is not very clear about, I mean, I feel like there's an intent, and I also think with like Perrys and Cava, and all of those are all also single-story business developments, and this is an existing business simply moving for the, and I have to narrowly look at what is before me, and I feel like this is a good place to grant an exemption like I did last time.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yeah, you know, since I was around when we went through this plan, the intent was, the idea at one point, you might all not have known this, but, you know, the movie theater was not going to be there, it was going, it was going to go away, and the thought of the area was to create a more of a, more crossroads and streets and more of a grid in that area. And we're only talking about a small portion of the overall, you know, discussion that took place, assuming it was completely scraped and redeveloped. That would have been perfect, and I would probably agree with that. Also, owning the toy store that was directly across the street from here, being one of the first tenants in the area, in a single-story building, I don't know how a one-story or two-story would draw more business for me. As being an owner directly across the street from this, I was right next to the apartments who didn't do anything for my business, that didn't really patronize or anything. And so for me, you know, I have personal experience in this area, specifically to pedestrian traffic and business, that has never come fruition with the existing residents there today. And so, you know, if we were going back, if we were redeveloping the whole thing, I could see that. I appreciate that the Roadhouse has, Texas Roadhouse has widened the street or widened the walking area, creating a little rest area for pedestrians, at least trying to activate it. And if I was reflecting now, if I opened that toy store across the street, I'd be ecstatic the fact that a Texas Roadhouse is across the street, because they could be looking through their windows towards my store. I would probably benefit off of it. But, you know, unfortunately, timing was, is wrong, and to this day, I've supported Texas Roadhouse. They are an existing business, that is absolutely correct, and they're just wanting to update their building. Their building needs a little love. This is a good opportunity to rejuvenate and give a refresh look, and I support the modification today.
Thank you. Councilmember Frey.
I appreciate all of the changes that you did, the facade of the windows on the second floor, but I think it goes against the intent of what we're trying to do in this area in the city, and we've spent time, hours, and money working and engaging the constituents of our community to see what they want, and the facade might look better, but it's not what we're trying to do in that community, and so I don't think it's compatible with what the code states right now, and I will be supporting, not supporting this.
Mr. Marriott, would you like a bite at the apple?
No, thank you.
All right, then that leaves me with my comments. I will be supporting the grant for a major modification. I tend to agree quite strongly with Councilmember Ambrose's points on this one. It is, there's a second floor that is being used. To me, that is the literal definition of usable space. Perhaps our intention was for it to be for residential or for commercial or for office, but with that sort of indiscrepancy in the code not being specific, that falls into the same gray area where that exists, well, it wasn't meant for these smaller projects, it's meant for these bigger projects. Perhaps what this tells us is that we might need to go back and look at our code and perhaps make in a few very small refinements to the language that exists there, just to clear up perhaps some of these inconsistencies or spaces where there exists for misunderstanding of the intention, if not the letter of the law. So if the letter of the law is that it must be two usable spaces, there is a second floor that is a usable space, I see that. So I don't see any plausible deniability for that. In addition, there's always concerns with allowing for pedestrians to have access to the second floor, because then you access all sorts of American Disability Act issues. There are elevator staircase requirements. It could fundamentally change the entire footprint and cost structure of this existing business wanting to move to a newer, nicer location, which is why I pause on enforcing it being for pedestrian access. And so for those reasons, I will be supporting this major modification and thank the applicant for the patience in the process and for coming back so that all seven could be present this evening. So with that, I will show the votes, and that passes five to zero with councilmembers Frey and Mormon, oh, five to two, thank you. Five to two with councilmembers Frey and Randy, Mayor Pro Tim Mormon being excused absences.
No votes.
What is wrong with me this evening? Oh, it has been a very long day. I have been going since 7:00 AM, folks, I apologize. Seven to two with councilmembers Frey and Mayor.
Five to two.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you, I've got it. Five to two with councilmembers Frey and Mayor Pro Tim Mormon being no votes. Okay, and after that deep humiliation, I will close the public hearing portion of this evening's agenda, and I will turn it over to, do we have a second public comment portion this evening? This is our five-minute limit portion. If there's anyone in chambers this evening that would like to speak at this time. All right, with that, I will close the public comment portion and open it to reports from the city council. Somebody save me here. Councilmember Davis.
I attended the Old Town shindig this weekend, and it was so much fun. Lots of art, lots of music, lots of folks in Old Towns, so that was very exciting. I'm glad to see that most of council were down there, and we just had a great time, and the funnel cake was fantastic.
Councilmember Frey.
I just want to say that my daughter and I did go to the Harvest Festival, and it was also wonderful. There was lots of things going on in Old Town and in other parts of the city, and it was great.
Thank you. Councilmember Ambrose.
Just to keep on publicizing the community meeting on September 17th, that is for the navigation center in District Two regarding the purchase of the building on Sixtieth Street, really encourage the public to come out and have their voices heard about the uses of this building and our proposal for using it as a navigation center and what our vision is regarding that.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Oh, sorry, it's September 17th, 6:00 PM, Simpson United Methodist Church.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you, and--
Your mic.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis reminded me also that we have a neighborhood meeting for Davis Lane, and now I'm struggling to find it in my calendar.
It's on the 12th.
Is it this Thursday?
Five, five to six.
It's not, it's not on the 12th, is it?
Twenty.
Thank you, I knew the 12th wasn't right. It is on the 20th, thank you, that helps. Thank you, it's on Wednesday, September 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Arvada West High School.
Thank you. Would you like to, Rocky Flat Stewardship Council, quickly? No, okay. And there's a reason you are remembering the 12th, and that is going to be the open house for Mountain Rail that the Colorado Department of Transportation is hosting. That is 5:30 to 7:30 PM at Oberon Middle School. For those who are unaware, the state, this past legislative session, did pass new legislation to support the attraction of increased passenger rail in Colorado. One of those two potential lines is the expanded passenger access of Mountain Rail, which would go Denver, Grand Junction, increased stoppage in the mountain areas, and those train tracks do cut directly through North Jefferson County. Obviously, that is our city of Arvada. So they are examining potential, I stress potential, of an additional ski train and expanded passenger stop in Northwest Jeffco. So if you are interested in that topic, the 12th, 5:30 to 7:30 PM at Oberon Middle School. With that, I see no additional lights, so turn it over, Ms. Haley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, City Council. We do have actually another business meeting next week due to the holiday earlier this month. We have two back-to-back business meetings, but we will have one workshop within the business meeting, and that is on our climate action plan, continuing those discussions. So we'll see you then. Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.